Can I please welcome everyone to the rescheduled meeting of the Health and Environment. Time is 6.30. My name is councillor Brian Laming, Chair. But can I please advise you that this meeting has been audio streamed from the council website, in addition, video recording uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Please can I remind the officers joining virtually to turn off their cameras and mute their microphones until invited. Please can I also remind members to speak clearly, do not use the microphone. In addition, please speak directly into the microphone and do not turn away when speaking. This will ensure your comments are picked up for the purposes of improving order. Finally, please can I ask everybody to ensure their mobile phones and other electronic devices are switched off entirely. Now we move on to the agenda. Do we have any apologies, deputy members?
No, Chair, and I've received no apologies for absence.
Okay. Declarations of interest, anybody? We're going to move the agenda slightly tonight, because councillor Ferguson has been presenting twice.
Chairman, councillor Ferguson has been doing director interviews today.
Yeah.
So I'm not quite sure when or whether they've finished yet, which may explain her lateness.
Okay, well, we'll change the menu around again. Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, can we just do the minutes of the meeting, please?
Have we? My apologies. Minutes of the last meeting, is everybody happy and content with those?
Yep, agreed.
Thank you. Public participation. Would we like to take these all together, or separate papers? Anybody got any preferences? All right, we'll start off with the general ones first. Stuart Evans and Laura Baker.
Hello, councillors, thank you for having us. Unfortunately, Anne can't be with us at the second, I think she's running a little bit out of time. We are here on behalf of last year's Youth Climate Assembly that was held at the University of Winchester, and I'm here who was there representing as mayor last year. And basically, we were just sort of bringing to you the findings of that event from last year, and it was in the context of COP26, and obviously, the Climate Assembly was trying to bring together concerned people between the ages of 18 and 30, and sort of get them to speak a bit around their experience and what they'd like to see Winchester looking like in the future. Based on the back of the success of that event, we are now hosting a Citizens Climate Assembly. Win Act, Winchester Action Against Climate Change, is sort of fronting that. We got some funding from the lottery, which was very good, and that's being held here in Guildhall on the 22nd of October. So I don't know if members have received any information about the previous climate assembly, I don't know if the papers have been circulated about that, but they sort of tie into one another. So it's a sort of letting you know that the previous one had happened, and just sort of trying to follow up on that, and then just letting you know that we're presenting, hopefully, in the December committee meeting, the findings from the upcoming Citizens Climate Assembly in October. So that's kind of why I was here, just to let that known. And Laura was a participant at the last year's Youth Climate Assembly, and I don't know if you want to speak a little bit to the experience of that, Laura?
Yeah, it was really good. We had lots of young people attend, which was amazing, to show that lots of young people, it's a really important issue to them, and we covered issues around transport around Winchester, the food.
Energy, we had building, and a zero-waste sort of lifestyle, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and we were imagining how all of those different areas would look like in Winchester, bearing in mind the climate crisis, and yeah, we came up with lots of suggestions, including like car-free Winchester.
Yeah, it was, there was a lot, there was a lot that we got through, and how the event ran was basically, we had professional speakers come in and discuss about the five different elements, and we had some local MPs, MPs, yeah, MPs come in and talk about the experience as, you know, local government trying to instigate these plans, and what the voting electorate would like to see versus what they are obviously putting on their poll and paper and saying, what are we going to work towards, and the sort of maybe misalignment between what they believed they would be voted in for versus what they might actually be voted in for. And that was quite an interesting experiment there. But yeah, we were sort of trying to make more people aware of the event, and obviously, I think a lot of the suggestions might come to this committee anyway for discussion. So just making you aware, and thank you for the time today.
Thank you. It's important that we listen to people of your generation, understand what you need and what you want. So have we got any questions, councillor Hatchwell?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for coming along today, and it was, we had a fantastic day back in October, was it, or November?
October last year, yeah.
Times pass so quickly, nearly a year, yeah. Thanks for coming along today, and I know you had lots of interesting ideas, and we definitely need to listen.
I don't know if you can send it to the chairman, and he can read that with the councillors.
That should be absolutely fine, yeah.
Is that at Winchester University again?
No, this will be held at Guildhall.
All right, okay.
This year, so we're, I think, two floors down in one of the bigger rooms. We've got it organised between 10:30 and 14:00. It should be really exciting, but that's open to all ages, and to join, feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councillors.
Sorry, I didn't see councillor, my apologies.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming along this evening and presenting what you have. I just wanted to ask you about the funding that you got from the lottery. Can I ask how much it was, if I may?
I don't know the exact amount, unfortunately. Maybe Anne just joined us and spoke to that more than I can.
My apologies, Chair. Not been a good day. No, we didn't get funding from the lottery last year. We had funding from Climate Coalition. It's this year's, this year's assembly, and I'm sorry, I don't know the subject.
And with regard to the next event, to follow on what councillor Warwick has said, I suggest perhaps you get something out to all parishes, the whole district, they all have voices of it.
Absolutely, it is open to the Winchester district, and we are trying to spread the word as much as possible, so if, you know, if we are able to circulate some information, it'd be great if some of the parish councillors can circulate that as well.
We can help you with that.
Fantastic.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Any hands make light work.
Absolutely.
Very much. Councillor, sorry, Anne, would you like to say anything to that?
Well, my apologies to, just had some bad news, but through a friend, so I was just dealing with that. Let's reflect my thoughts. I'm dealt with a lot of the points, but just really wanting to say that last year's assembly was a learning experience for everybody involved, and I think it was very well received by the participants. We focused on young people because that was the focus of the mayor's programme last year, and we worked closely with councillor Atwell last year, and it was also the focus of the sponsor who provided us, and it gave us a useful cohort, I think, to focus on to look at how to run a climate assembly, what's involved, and what works and what doesn't. But I think the feedback we had, soundingly positive, I think they had a sort of enriching learning experience, both in terms of the content, but also in the dialogue, and I'm hoping that Laura and Stuart have already made that point too, but also that we've got some really clear, well-thought-out message.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much for coming, appreciate you spending the time.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Right, in view of councillor Ferguson being unable to be here at the start of the meeting, can we move on to the biodiversity grass management?
This is a very welcome opportunity to report back to the Policy Committee on the biodiversity grass management pilot scheme, which has taken place in Allford and Badger Farm. The pilot was introduced in response to very high levels of public requests for the council to take a different approach to managing the areas of grass that we control, reducing the number of cuts and allowing wildflowers to grow. We fully accept that over the period the pilot's been in operation, the scheme has had its problems, and there are things we could have done better, but those lessons have been learned. They include firstly, communication and management of expectations. We do need to ensure that communications are clearer and more regular with local stakeholders to deal with issues as they arise and report back on progress and what's happening. We also need to promote a greater understanding of the work that's being done, and that managing verges for biodiversity is not the same as creating a garden with flowers that might be seen in the countryside. These verge areas are semi-wild and will develop over time into a mix of flowers, grasses, and other plants that thrive, given the fertility of the soil and other conditions in that particular local area. As an example, poppies are often put into wildflower mixes because they're very attractive in full bloom. Unfortunately, after the first year, they will disappear because they like fertile, regularly cultivated soil, not the kind of conditions you find in roadside verges. They'll be present for a year and then just disappear as other plants take over. Secondly, the ID Verde contract, the contract isn't very sensible, and it makes it difficult to change cutting schedules, and if we are to considerably expand the area managed for biodiversity in future, we will need to consider how that's incorporated into any future contract. Finally, location, not all verges are appropriate for this kind of approach, many need paths or edges and sightlines cut to manage residents' needs and avoid verges looking entirely unmanaged. Despite those lessons learnt, and some of the things that people haven't particularly liked about the pilot, the initial signs are very good. However, it will be a number of years before we can fully assess the success of the scheme, not only with further increasing the biodiversity, but as the fertility of the soil is reduced by removing the arisings, we do anticipate annual growth of the grass and other plants to reduce, leading to a generally more attractive appearance throughout the year, which should gain additional public support. Given the increasing public appetite for supporting a more natural environment, the recognised need to increase biodiversity in the district, and the potential for increased carbon capture, we are recommending that the trial continue, and that consideration be given to a gradual expansion of the scheme with local engagement at each stage. So I've got the team here, Chair, and I don't know if they want to add anything to that.
Yeah, just to say thank you, and yeah, I think that covers it all, but we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I've got an apology to councillor Wallace, I forgot to ask him for the public speaking, so would you like to come up to the mic now, please?
Just a quick one, obviously, as I think everybody round this table knows, Britain has lost nearly half of its biodiversity since the Industrial Revolution, and the country is ranked in the bottom 10% in the world, and the worst among the G7 nations. Winchester's recognised this decline and has put in place a biodiversity action plan to start delivering improvement, which is really positive. Given this background, however, I want to challenge the biodiversity team to accelerate their plans. I'd be keen to see at least one area in the southern parishes included in the coming year. If needed, I'm able to put the team in touch with local conservation groups who are keen to get involved.
Thank you. Any questions? Right, councillor Pearson.
Thank you, councillor Loney, and Coral, and the team. Quite clear there's some very good work going on here, but a couple of queries, so these are verges, and how do they, how does your biodiversity aim, which is an admirable one, which I fully support, how do they deal with roadside salt during the winter? Particularly, as a lot of verges you show as examples are in the urban areas, so quite clearly, there'll be salting on the roads. How does that deal with your environment?
I'm not aware that we've got any issues with salt, but I'll pass over to the team who might know a bit more.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. It's an interesting point. I haven't seen much, so plant life kind of lead the campaign for improving our verges and managing them in a better way, and I actually haven't seen them mention salt or potential impacts of that. I think probably most of the salting and things happens in the winter, which is kind of when the grassland is in more of a dormant state, so we're not really cutting the grass then, it's sort of left as it is, so yeah, it's not the main growing season. So you'd hope that by the time the flowers are kind of germinating and it's starting to grow again, most of the salt would have kind of washed away from the verges, but yeah, if I'm completely honest, I'm not an expert on that, and yeah, it'd be interesting to see if it does have an impact.
Did a sort of, a couple of trials, metre squares, just to see what the impact of salt is, because quite clear there's going to be some impact, from what I can understand, you're depending upon leaching over the winter to get rid of the soil in the spring, which is great if it's working, and we've got to find out whether it is working, otherwise we have an issue there. The, a couple of phrases used in the thing, you talk about meadows, I don't quite share how a verge morphs into a meadow, so how do you define a meadow?
Yeah, I think that's another one, but Coral, feel free to chip in if you want to.
Coral was hoping you were going to answer.
A meadow, sort of in simple terms, is basically meadow grassland, so it's grassland with flowering species within it. So in sort of general layman terms, any verge has the potential of developing into a meadow if it's got a combination of species in there, so not just grasses but flowering species as well, then yeah, it could be considered a meadow, and certainly what we're trying to develop is species-rich grassland, so short grassland that is going to be more in favour of those flowering species, balanced rather than just grasses.
Also, Chair, I'm looking at the pages 52 and 53, the lessons learned, and thank you for including that, because sometimes, frequently, you get reports like this, and no lessons learned, apparently not, but you've been honest with them, and I think, and I welcome that. The, I've got to say that one of the big contentions of wildlife verges in the rural areas is sightlines at junctions. If you've got a four-metre road, and often the country lanes are four metres, you get a wildlife verge, including wildlife hedge, reduce the width of the road quite somewhere to lane, really. But it's the sightlines, which I notice is one of the, one of the lessons learned, so normally, what you're saying is if the verge is only two metres, then you're sticking to the two cuts. If it's four metres, or six metres, then you're looking at a particular junction, you're looking at a more frequent regime, is that right, Coral?
Some of the verges that do have sightline issues, cut the, still cut the verges themselves every four times a year, but the sightlines are cut every nine times a year, they'll be kept as a, and the, any that are only two metres.
Yeah, I think, just to add to what Coral said, if they were particularly narrow verges, we tended to take, remove them from the project, and certainly where we've looked at verges where we're cutting even less frequently, so there's just a handful of areas where we're only cutting twice a year, and they're the ones that we're looking to be at least six metres wide, so that they can have a bigger cut.
Okay, this is the final one, definitely. About a year ago, a query came up, one of my communities was asking if they could, I think, almost cultivate the verge, and they found they couldn't, perhaps councillor Warwick, because he's the person who answered this question, because the county insists you have a, some sort of licence to do this. Now, how are you managing with that? The community guard, and you want community support inevitably, otherwise you're going to say, well, where's my council money going? You're not cutting, they're even cutting the verges, I've heard that many, many times. But how do you deal with this sort of licence that the county requires if you're going to cultivate or decultivate the verges?
Yeah, so basically, it's called a cultivation licence, and you can get one from Hampshire County Council if you plant up verges, but you have to pay a fee, I believe, to get that licence. For this project specifically, we're not looking at sowing any seeds or planting up the verges as such, we're focusing on the management side of things, so reducing the cutting and collecting the cuttings, so that the conditions are correct for, allow us to sort of bloom in their own right, really, so that we're looking at the seed bank that's pre-existing. I think there could be potential to sow things like yellow rattler or things in the future, but at the moment, we're really.
I tell my community it's not a flower bomb.
Well, they can, they can do their own projects, and they can even, you know, liaise with us and talk to us about it, but specifically, at the moment, we're.
Thanks very much. And thank councillor Loney, good introduction.
Councillor Laming, can I?
Sorry.
With anti-verges, they would have to get recognition, we would prefer not to cut four times a year, but Hampshire do, they're very strict with that. They only pay us, and we, partly, we've been cutting all at Hampshire for nine times. Didn't really have a later standard when we, we only wanted to.
Councillor Loney.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just conscious that we didn't actually respond to councillor Wallace's points around looking at the southern parishes. Our preference is to continue building on the work we've already done, partly because it's around building biodiversity corridors, so slowly spreading a similar management scheme, and the other thing is to reduce the distance that's actually being driven when the areas are mowed and the grass picked up. Despite having said that, while that's our preference, we're very happy to hear from communities who'd like us, who'd like to be part of a future progression, potentially of the scheme. So we're not saying no, but we're just saying, that's not actually the approach we're proposing at the moment.
That's a question, I appreciate that, because it's a question of using resources, but I know that Oliver's battery, being next to Badger Farm, is very interested, joining the process. Councillor, Dr Tivicoat, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I also commend what councillor Pearson said, the sort of the honest, the upfront nature of the lessons learned part of this report, and my question relates to that. I think the key with all this is communication, because buying from people is so important, and last year, many councillors would have been on the receiving end of both positive and negative comments about verges being cut or being allowed to grow. I know, and I'll come back to more of that in debate, but I know this, it says the ID Verde contract is not very flexible, and that it's difficult to change cutting schedules. Just sort of wondering, I suppose, is ID Verde as invested in this as the council are, as a company, because I mean, presumably, it's pretty key that they, they're on board of all this.
They've actually been really helpful, and they have bought a new machine, which we're paying for, but yeah, they, especially last year, when we had a lot of difficulties, they went out of their way to help, so they are invested in it.
Councillor Clea.
Thank you, Chair. When the grass-cutting season commences, I must admit that in my ward in Wickham, I get more emails and phone calls from people saying, isn't it about time the grass verges were cut, they look untidy and unsightly, so I think the, one of the keys is communication, and I know you're not, councillor Loney, saying you're coming out to southern parishes just yet, but I'm going to have a hard time saying, well, we're going to let that grass verge go. I mean, I love it, but they, I don't know if it's because there's an older community in Wickham, but they like their grass verges neat and tidy at the present time.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Clea. Certainly, my experience knocking on doors is that you knock on one person's door, and they say, why are you cutting the grass quite so often? And their next-door neighbour will say, it's a mess, why aren't you doing it more often? So, you know, I mean, we, we're perfectly well aware that this is not something where we're going to win over absolutely everybody in the district. We think it will get easier as people get more used to how these kind of cutting regimes work, and what we expect them to look like in the long term, but we do realise that it's a challenge to convert everybody, and part of that is around that choice about where we implement different cutting regimes. Certainly, where I am, most of the verges are narrower than two metres, so obviously, with what we've already looked at, you know, just stopping mowing them is not really an option, partly because we, I know that in my area, we'd have guerrilla mowing, where people went out and mowed them for us if they felt we weren't doing it enough, so it is something that we're well aware of.
We've certainly experienced quite a lot of different opinions on Badger Farm, to put it the least. I think that's changed somewhat. I think one of the biggest problems is the height of the grass. You're assuring us that that will gradually reduce over a period of years.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I was just going to say, yeah, on the height of the grass, we do, we do expect that to reduce as the years go on. I think it does vary, and it depends, like I was saying, about the existing seed bank and what nutrients are in the ground, and we've found certainly with some verges, the grass is very long at the moment, whereas we've got other ones where it's already fairly short, even just in the first couple of years of this pilot, but yeah, that should change as it progresses. Yeah, and yeah, just to say, we are, we are monitoring it, and that is one of the things that we look at, is the height of the grass.
Thank you, councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a paper printout of the documents today, so on page 51, 2.7, I just want to get clarity, if I may, on the equipment that was, that's been purchased. I'm sure I, unless I've misheard the officer say, Coral, that suitable machinery has been purchased at a cost of £48,000 by ID Verde, so that's saying that they've, they've bought it. I understood that. I understood that we've bought it. So at the end of that five-year term, who's that equipment going to belong to? Is it going to be called to Winchester City Council or ID Verde? As we've paid for it.
Probably won't be fit for purpose though. They're just last...
Thank you very much, thank you.
That leads on to a question of, we've collected the grass, what do we do with it?
At the moment, we take it to the green waste.
It's just left to rot.
It's affected and... Have green waste.
Yeah. Okay, so we hadn't thought about using it. I would suggest us to get rid of that and some of the other green waste ourselves.
That is something we are talking about. Get rid of all of it. That's why these machines are so... Have to cut it, you have to collect it at the... Those of it. Don't be very long once, up to nine times.
And what you're saying is that grass cutting is less. Well, we've collected the grass and therefore the budget cost is the same.
At the moment, it's more. Cut and collect. We would hope after...
Thank you. Any other questions? We move on to the recommendations. Oh, sorry, debate. Any debate? Yes, councillor Warwick.
Well, no, only just, this is a really important topic. So I know within Hampshire, we have, across Hampshire, there are areas where there are ecological sites of importance that happen to be verges. So actually those have a special management so that it's not full cutting rate. There's four different types of regime rather than four cuts, if that makes sense. So the regime that might front-load the cutting and all back-load it, depending on what species they're trying to protect. I just think it's really nice that we're all working together, Hampshire, Winchester, all the districts, observing those verges. Three per cent of Hampshire is a verge, but it's a significant landhold.
Yes, and I think also that we've had such a vast reduction in proper meadowland. This is a way of helping it come back. John Tavon Cooper.
Completely concur, councillor Warwick. It's excellent that the authorities are working together on this and this is a really good paper and a really important project. It's something though that will be, obviously some grumbles about, but I think we'll have to just ride through them. And I think the key to it all really is good communication. And I think what I would say is implore everyone involved to let members know exactly how the verges are going, where they want to go in future, what, you know, what management is required so that councillors, members can get the message out to their communities. And, you know, the message should go to community groups as well so they can get the message out. Because the more it goes out, the more people will buy into it, I think. But it's a really good paper, a really good scheme, so well done to everyone involved.
Thank you. Councillor Pearson.
Thanks, never quite sure. Yeah, I, I welcome this and, you know, well done the team. It's an interesting start. Couple of things though, we've said, not all the verges are cut by ID Verde. Some of the parishes actually do it themselves. So there's got to be some liaison. If you're going to have the same sort of cuts throughout the whole district, quite clearly you've got to speak to the parishes that have their own contracts. And they're particularly concerned, not with so much with biodiversity, but sightlines at junctions, some of which, I think of a couple of Maren Village, are quite dangerous if the grass is allowed to grow to the height it wants to grow, which may be something about 0.5 of a metre tall. Yet that sort of thing, and you've got a small car coming to a junction, you really can't see far enough down the road. Thinking of, well, Malcolm will know the junction I'm talking about. It's Forest Road and gravel hill, Malcolm. That's an issue. The other issue is if you want this sort of thing to go on the villages, we've got to have some liaison between the county, which I noticed you do refer to, and groups of people who actually want their open spaces to develop along this sort of lines. Again, I quote Smaron Village, Springvale, it's got some big open spaces there which are biodiverse deserts. And when we made inquiry, what we could do about them, we find they're all owned by Hampshire County Council. And we came, we came across this remit. They had to have an agricultural licence if you want to do anything with them, like plant a couple of trees. And some of them are big enough to plant trees in or to encourage, you know, meadows and the verges. So, you know, with that, and I understand from this report that Cora has written, councillor Loney is speaking about, the liaison is there, conversations with the members and parishes. Hope you actually mean that because to date, all this promises of consultation, including the members, hasn't taken place. Certainly not in my ward that I'm aware of. At least I've never been invited to one. Now, I'm not saying it's not going to happen in the future. I'm just saying I've heard these promises before. So yes, great, go ahead with it. But please remember there is road safety issue involved as well. Question the countryside when we're talking about lanes, which do have verges, but they make these lanes, the average width of a country lane in my area is four metres. If you have a metre verge, and some of these verges, because we're letting go wild, are slipping down into the road. Now, we don't notice that unless there's a footpath involved, in which case we then have to get the county in to cut the verge back from the pavement, the area between Uplman, Bishopswalffam is one countryside one, between my Bishopswalffam, Maren Village. Again, we had issues where the pavement actually was half the size it should have been. It'd been swallowed by the verge slipping from the bank down. And all this is part of the same thing. So it's really a bigger issue. You're doing some great work doing what you are doing and I welcome that. Do you support it? It sounded a bit like Jeremiah, but I am in support of it. I, I, thanks very much. It's a well-written report. I don't like, as you say, you've admitted yourself, there are issues that are still going to be worked on, which is great, good news. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook.
Tremendous report. All I would say as well is the planned communications, which councillor Tippett Cooper's already mentioned as other fellow councillors, it is paramount that we do speak to the parishes, okay? With reference to what goes on and what we do forward, I noticed on page 53 of the report, it refers to an additional £52,000 square of grass to be cut using the purchased cut and collect machinery. Will we get some input on that and where that will, will that likely to be? I, I sort of rolled that in with a question there, if I may. Now, we're in debate. Am I allowed to ask a question to that?
No.
Sorry.
Thank you, chair, that's very kind of you. I'll then send an email to the officer and I would...
Yes, please.
...to that, thank you, I should hope. And you're, you're talking about identifying sites, I welcome that as well. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Cook. I would just like to add that we've certainly learnt a lot on Badger Farm, on the way it's been going on. We've had some criticism, we've had some praise. But I would like to add that the roundabout at Sainsbury's, that you had a really nice display. I had a lot of phone calls when somebody trimmed around it to give them the sightlines, complained. You wouldn't believe it, it was quite spectacular, the number of calls. So congratulations, that was a good report, well-written, and we look forward to progressing this. Can we go on to recommendations? Is everybody happy with the two recommendations? Has everybody agreed on that? Agreed, thank you.
Agreed.
Well, councillor Ferguson, your timing was superb.
First of all, thank you, chair, for changing the agenda so that I could be here to introduce the two papers that I now have coming up. Unfortunately, I was detained in another meeting which ran on unexpectedly. I've come straight from... Today, we're giving a presentation around the work we're doing under the health and wellbeing umbrella. Callum, who's here, is going to take us through that presentation. And I thought it was important for this committee to see the breadth of the work that we're doing in the community with a number of important groups, particularly a lot of disadvantaged groups. And we're hoping that members will enjoy the presentation and if there are any questions, then we're happy to answer them. The key thing I would say though is that the work we do is done really with quite a limited budget. There is a considerable amount achieved within that limited budget, but we're still ambitious to do more. Thank you, chair.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Thank you, chair. Just share my screen. So this evening, I'm just going to talk through our breadth of work as councillor Ferguson just mentioned. Won't go into too much detail, I'll just give you a brief overview. As I, there's quite a few slides on this presentation. This first slide just basically captures our area of work in sort of one big PowerPoint, big presentation really. Grants, community capacity building, city of sanctuary work, parks and open spaces, work with partner organisations, secure, secure new facilities, leisure centres and the cost of funding support. To give you a brief overview, we obviously contribute towards the living well priority within the council plan, reducing health inequalities, providing a wide range of physical and cultural activities for all ages, increasing opportunities for active travel and providing an attractive and well-used public facilities and green spaces for everyone. Without giving you a lecture on sport development, we, we also consider the five outcomes within the government's sporting future strategy as well as the five big issues within Sport England United the Movement strategy. So they're the two, two key strategies that we sort of contribute towards. Five key outcomes, physical, mental, wellbeing, individual development, social and community development and economic development. And within Sport England United the Movement, we concentrate on the five big issues, which is recover and reinvent, connecting communities, positive experiences for young children and connecting with health and wellbeing and active environments. Again, to give you a brief overview of where we sit within Sport England Active Lives data, as you can see, Winchester are very high in sort of being active. And when we say active, that means 150 minutes per week within physical activity. We're 73.7%. And as you can compare that to Hampshire, our national average, we're sort of well, well above that. On the contrast, inactivity levels, that's anything under 30 minutes a week, we're really well, 18% as opposed to Hampshire and the national average as well. So really strong scores where we are and we hope to continue that and build on that going forward. And just to give you a brief overview again on where we sit within Hampshire, we're, we're top activity level, just in front of East Hampshire. And again, inactive levels, doing very well, again, just behind East Hampshire this time with 18%. So brief summary on that, those deemed inactive, like I said, 73.7%. It's a 2% increase from the last report, which was in May. Those deemed inactive, 18%. Again, that's a 1.2 decrease from the last report. When we compare that nationally, we are 12.3% more active and at county level, 8.4 more active. So yeah, doing very well. Overall, very good progress as we recover from, from Covid. But we understand that there are some groups within the district that need to be targeted more, encouraging them to be more active on a regular basis, which is what we're sort of focusing on going forward. What we do within the district, support clubs, provide a wide breadth of community programmes, leisure centre provision with the new Winchester Sport and Leisure Park and the facilities at Meadowside Leisure Centre, community outreach work within the leisure centre programmes, health and wellbeing partnerships. We organise a number of events throughout the year and focus on disability sport division as well as school sport programmes. So the first sort of programme, which I'm going to touch on quickly, is our school holiday programmes within the district. We've created a strong partnership with Aquila Nuclear Energy Engineering, A2 Dominion and Osborne, as well as Active Me 360 in the, in the past as well. And they sort of support us with financial contributions and Active Me 360 are a coaching provider who do our outreach delivery work. We provide October half-term, Easter holiday and summer holiday camps. An example of a programme, just to give you an idea, we deliver sport programmes within certain areas within the district. And these rotate on a sort of quarterly basis on every sort of half-term and summer term. So we try and cover most of the areas across Winchester. Whitley, Wickham, Bishopswalffam, Colden Common, Winall, Wey, Oxford, Mitchell, Dever, South monster, Kingswery and Stanmore and within the city centre are just some examples. Just to keep you a little picture of what's, what we've done before. Survey, so we always do surveys at the end of each programme. Within our last programme that we delivered on, we've attracted over 200 girls and boys, engaged with 31% of those that are deemed inactive. 82% of children rated the programme as highly enjoyable. 77% of parents felt that their child would benefit from regular sessions within their community going forward. And 62% of parents are willing to travel up to five miles or more for their child to take part in sport. Other community programmes which are involved and which we've helped support in the past is the Winchester Park Runs. We've got one in Winchester City and one in Whitley. We've also got the Junior Park Run as well within the city centre and they attract, you can see, average attendance of over 200 adult park runs each week, which is fantastic and still a high number for junior park runners as well. We've just come to an end of our Winchester Park Yoga. This takes place every Sunday, just come to an end this, at the end of last month. We've received funding to put this one free of charge for adults and children within our community. We're looking to extend that programme into the next year and hopefully look to branch out to Meadowside as well. Winchester wellbeing walks, these walks take place every week. We've currently got four walks, two at Bishopswalffam, one in Colden Common and one in the city centre. We're targeting Whitley, another one in the city centre, Oxford and Wey as we progress into the new year as well. So we have lots of volunteers to lead these sessions, which are trained and first day trained. We've, we've created a strong partnership with Community First who are supporting us with that going forward. So we've got a really good, strong partner there. Munch Nutrition, again, these aren't delivered by ourselves, but we've, we've worked with Munch Nutrition to support them in the delivery of education sessions for parents and children on healthy lifestyles and nutrition. These have taken place within Stanmore, Winall, Oliver's Battery and Kingswery. And then Disability Sport. Again, another partnership which we've had for a while with Osman Tennis at the River Park facilities there. These take place every Wednesday and we've secured a grant from the LTA of up to £1,500 to continue that programme as we go into the new year as well. Sport in Mind, we've, again, really strong collaboration with them to deliver weekly badminton sessions at the Winchester Lido. These are free, open to anyone over 17 experiencing mental health problems. Again, just gives you an example of what we, who we work with and what we deliver on. And we're just working on a new programme with Cheswell Lodge, which is moving, moving more in extra care in conjunction with... in extra care, in conjunction with Hampshire County Council, Energise Me, who are active partnership, and Everyone Active. We're sort of using this as a pilot scheme to see if we can engage with those there. Activities which we're considering are assisted circuits, yoga, steady and strong, Tai Chi and some resistance training as well. In regards to our school sports provision, we've worked really hard with Active Me 360 over the past for a number of years, coming out about five years now to embed a fully functioned sports, school sport programme within most of our schools. Two of their programmes are Maths on the Move and English on the Move, which incorporates physical activity with maths and English. In particular, 80% of children have reported an increase in confidence relating to maths, 28% more children achieved recommended physical activity levels in school, and 93% of children demonstrated an improvement in maths performance, which is really incredible. We also work with them on breakfast, after-school clubs and sort of lunchtime sessions as well. Again, working with them on a new initiative called Operation Active Hampshire, which is encouraging more schools within Hampshire, as well as the Winchester district, obviously to get more people active. They're investing over 10,000 hours of physical education in school sport delivery by 2025, with a view of engaging with 25,000 children across Hampshire. So we're working with them to sort of really drive that in the district. We're also looking at our first aid sessions, so providing schools with an opportunity to work with their students on a six-week course for first aid, so it gives them a bit of an understanding of how to incorporate first aid within their school and hopefully give them a bit of more education on how to look after themselves and others. So within the last academic year, we've, as you can see, worked with a number of schools, and we hope to drive that forward even more going forward. You can see a little picture of me delivering an assembly on what we offer and sort of engaging with them, and that's the only way we can really sort of do that, is by talking to the pupils themselves and getting them engaged. The way that we target our schools is by how the free school meals situation works. So we look at those with high school meals, free school meals, and then we kind of build our programme around that. That's not to say that we don't work with those from the Sparshots and the St Fates, but we predominantly focus on those that need that extra support as well. Events that we worked on in the past and which we continue to deliver on is our sort of annual disability event, which is Paralympic Personal Best. This takes place at the Winchester Sport and Leisure Park. We've just had our 10th year anniversary, and we've sort of attracted 150 participants with physical and learning disabilities to take part in sport, which is fantastic. Hopefully, you would have seen the Queen Baton Relay event that we held at the Winchester Sport and Leisure Park on the 6th of July. We've kind of turned that into a school sports festival as well, when we worked with six primary schools to engage them in sport and physical activity whilst we waited for the baton to arrive, and then they sort of got involved with the celebrations from there. And we just celebrated the one-year anniversary weekend of the opening of Winchester Sport and Leisure Park as well. And to celebrate, we had Rebecca Adlington there as well, and we had a family fun day on the Sunday as well. Again, we look to support our local clubs going forward. We provide them with funding and grant support, business development plans, links to engagement with schools and community venues, as well as involving them in events such as the Queen Baton Relay, facility support and general promotion as well. I work particularly hard with Everyone Active to develop health wellbeing plans and sports development plans at the leisure centre, which covers a broad breadth of programmes within the community, as well as in the leisure centre as well, focusing on community classes and general sports development and health and wellbeing programmes too. Again, we don't just focus on the city centre itself, we also have the same programme at Meadowside Leisure Centre, albeit at a much smaller scale due to the size of the centre, but we still look to offer a programme that incorporates the community. Key projects that we're working on with Everyone Active going forward, securing funding for severe mental health programme over the two years, outreach community work within Stanmore, pre-hab cancer within the University Hospital Southampton as well. We have a Health and Wellbeing Advisory Board, which we're looking to reignite going forward into the new year. This will obviously support our health and wellbeing plans going forward. Key partners of this include Hampshire County Council, Everyone Active, Energise Me, Community First, Hampshire Hospital Trust, the CCG and Hampshire Cultural Trust. Like I said, we're looking to relaunch that in October and November with biannual meetings and sub-quarterly group meetings, as well as hopefully looking to support and sort of launch the new district health strategy as well, working with the NHS and Hospital Foundation Trust. Key priorities for us are in line with the Hampshire Health and Wellbeing Strategy, which is starting well, living well, ageing well and dying well, with a particular focus on mental health, physical activity for children, enabling people to live healthier lives, focusing on the main lifestyle risk factors, and developing communities and generally creating healthier home environments for those that are living independent into older age. Thank you. Hopefully, that was a real quick sort of showdown of what we do within our department.
Thank you. Nice presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. On the documents, I've got page 19, and the heading of the page is Sport England Data Summary. However, we understand that there are still some groups within the district who we need to target and encourage. Can I ask which groups they are that you still need to engage with?
Sorry. The main groups for us are those that, what we got, those with sort of physical learning disabilities or disabilities, women and girls are always a key target for us as well. So those that aren't sort of seen engaged in sport and physical activity on a regular basis, and those in line with Sport England priorities as well. So at the moment, it's disabilities, young people and females and girls. As well as that, we're looking at, as we mentioned in the slide about those schools on, looking at free school meals, so those sort of areas as well, we're focused on particularly going forward.
Chair, can I just add to that, so just building on what Callum said there, that's very much then the focus for where Callum targets, the efforts that he puts in. So you'd have picked up the thread there that he was talking in terms of the work being very much focused on people who fit those sort of categories and those target groups. So as he's mentioned, as councillor Ferguson mentioned in your introduction, we do have a very limited capacity to do this work, so we very much focus on those areas where the work can make the most impact, and the people who are the least active and have the least opportunity, so.
Our councillor, Tiber Cooper.
Yeah, I'll very quickly take the opportunity to follow up on that. I mean, on Sports England's recent analysis, they were saying how existing inequalities in terms of health outcomes have widened since pandemic, and the groups most particularly hit are young people aged 16 to 34, over 75, disabled people, and those from Black, Asian, other minority ethnic backgrounds. And it does look like several of those categories, you can see the folk. My question is around the leisure centre, and since it's been built, I kind of want to know whether there has been a marked improvement in health outcomes since it's doing great work, because it's been a massive success in terms of usage and different uses, but do we have the data in terms of how that's impacted?
Thank you. So we meet with Everyone Active on a quarterly basis to review their figures and their performance. We meet with them also on a monthly basis to go through, say, their sort of performance indicators, particularly those issues that you've highlighted, we don't go into too much depth on, but we do capture figure analysis on their figures, so how many people have participated in their programmes. In terms of their community outreach programme, I think they do capture sort of postcode analysis as well, and the breakdown of gender, so we can look into that and get a sort of report put together if that's something they'd be interested in.
And really, just to add, that we do know investment in sports and leisure facilities is paying off. I was recently, in fact, last week, visiting Meadowside Leisure Centre, and since we made a substantial investment in the facilities there, the membership has gone up from 150 to almost 600, so that's a full-fold increase. So through investment, we can actually improve people's ability to engage and live their lifestyles and wellbeing.
Thank you, Ashwell.
I've got a few questions. That's okay. Thanks, Callum, that's a great presentation. I'll go through page by page, that might be easier if that's okay, Chair. Page 22, you mentioned the different times you have the activities, like the October term, Easter holidays and summer. Are there any plans at all to have anything done during the Christmas break?
Thank you. We have tried doing programmes over the Christmas period, but because of the weather and the access to sort of, because we like to bring the community and bring sports to the doorstep of our communities, that means going to local parks and fields to do that. And because of the light issues and the weather, it's kind of hasn't been as successful as sort of the Easter, October and the summer holidays, so that's why we sort of come to a stop with that. But having said that, Everyone Active, they've got sessions taking place during the sort of Christmas period, so that kind of balances out where we can't make that happen for our communities on their doorstep, but they can come to the leisure centre and hopefully take part in sport that way.
Councillor Ashwell, and if I may, as part of our cost of living response, we are asking the team to look at whether or not there is something we could do at Christmas to keep children active and warm, so that is something we're going to be looking at as a potential thing. But it may not be possible, but we certainly want to look at it.
Thank you. Another question I have is, how do you actually advertise all these events to the various groups? Is it through doctors' surgeries or pamphlets sent out? I'm not sure how it gets to know about them.
Yes, so we produce flyers and posters that we do send out to all the schools within the district. We lean heavily on our key partners, so our coaching provider, Active Me 360, they have a lot of connections within the district and wider Hampshire as well to promote our work. As you mentioned, we've got good, strong links with GP surgeries, so we can give them out there, and the leisure centres as well do a lot of work to promote our services. So in partnership with all our, in partnership with everyone that we work with, we then that's how we encourage them to get involved with our programmes.
Thank you. I've just got one more, sorry. Let me just go through page 33. That mentions the different schools you've been in contact with. I don't actually see Cornerstone School in Whiteley on the list, or Denmead School. Are they included or not?
They are included. We have worked within Denmead before in the past, as in the community, as well as Knowl as well, around that sort of area in Wickham. We have tried to work with Cornerstone in the past, and we've sort of produced, we have gained funding to work with them. And I know Everyone Active have done a lot of outreach work from Meadowside to engage with Cornerstone. So I know Steph, the general manager there, is working hard to engage. We met with her last week, and she did mention the primary schools around the leisure centre, and that's one of her key priorities. So hopefully, going forward, we can see some positive outcomes with links with the schools there.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Councillor Batho.
Chair, thank you, Callum, for the report, and it's encouraging to see the benefits that we're producing here in Winchester in terms of overall level of vision and activity within our community. I just want to carry on with the question around the same, as Ashwell was asked. You've got a list on that page 33 of all the schools that are engaged. They are, I think, primary schools, and I'm just wondering, secondary schools, what's being done for those over 13, because I think most are primarily at the primary or junior level. So it's just a question of what are 17-year-olds?
Yeah, thank you, that's a really good question. We've predominantly focused in the past with primary school age groups, because we knew that was a sort of a key priority nationally, so that's how our focus has started. We have worked in the past with secondary schools, and I know that Active Me 360, our coaching provider, do a lot of work in Swanmore, as you'll be pleased to know, Frank. So that's, I know that's part of their programme, so it's not to say that we're not doing it directly, but our other providers are sort of touching on secondary schools and older children as well. So that's how we kind of support that group. We also have in the past worked with the colleges as well, Sparshot and Peter Simmons. Again, that's something that we look to build on going forward. So it's not that to say that we won't be working with them, I know it's something that we're looking to do going forward as well. So hopefully, with our connections, we can build on what we've done and then continue that work.
Just for your benefit, councillor Batho, again, Everyone Active do have their own outreach programmes as a key partner for us. So for example, they had a programme called Every Girl Can, and that very definitely was targeting, you know, girls at secondary school. So there are other programmes. To be fair to Callum, there were plenty more sites he could have produced. We had to fight to keep this many. We just felt there's so much here for you as members to know about, that we wanted to give you a real flavour for the extent of the work we are doing in this area.
Thank you. I've got a couple of small questions. When we were designing and building the leisure centre, we were very keen on the inclusion of disabilities and also the health and wellbeing side of it. We noticed from what we were told about what was going on in the East Riving, where they had referrals from the doctors to the gym, and the gym meeting the clients outside the centre, because they've never, most of these people have never been anywhere near a sports centre in their lives, so they take away the fright, we're meeting them outside and slowly bringing them in, and giving a monthly report back to the GPs, so that when they saw the GPs, they actually knew that they were being monitored. And the results that the NHS found were actually spectacular compared to what the national average was. They also had the benefit of finding out that the gym membership doubled over that period of time. So I'm wondering whether you are engaging that far down the line to encourage people to use it, also is the health and wellbeing side of it?
Yeah, thank you. So disabilities, those with physical and learning disabilities are a big sort of area for us, as you can see from our annual event that we produce each year, big target. We also work alongside, and we promote the work that Everyone Active deliver on, in terms of their Active Lifestyles Programme, which incorporates the exercise referral scheme and community classes, so that targets anyone with sort of physical and sort of disabilities and long-term health conditions. So we actually don't deliver that, but Everyone Active are our key partners. They work closely with the Primary Care Network of Winchester. So again, about a year ago or so, we created this strong network with the PCN to sort of deliver these programmes within sight, and it's proven to be a success. The figures, I'm not sure off the top of my head, but they're building on what we've delivered in-house before, and it's continued to grow and continuing to be a success. So the links that we've created have just, have been great, yeah.
Good on place to hear that. Chair, can I just add to that quickly? I think that change in the Active Lifestyle and the GP for programme has been a huge success, actually. It used to be run in-house by us, but it transferred and it's now jointly delivered, as Callum mentioned, by the Primary Care Network in the Winchester city area and by Everyone Active across the wider district. And that moved to the Primary Care Network taking a central role, and it's really key because it actually means we're not now, we're not operating outside of there and handing data back and forward, you know, to inform the GPs. It's actually the GP surgeries themselves and their staff who are engaging directly and providing that service. So, you know, that service has now been provided directly out of the Primary Care Network, and that just takes away a link in the chain and really means that people are liaising directly with those surgeries and getting the best. with those surgeries and getting the best support they can.
Yeah, but the question is, does the report go from leisure centre direct to the GP?
That's what I'm saying. It's not actually the leisure centre, it's the GPs, the Primary Care Network staff are the ones who are actually directly coordinating that programme. So although leisure centre staff are involved in some of the activity, the GP, the Primary Care Network staff are actually the ones leading and managing that programme. So that is the GPs effectively running the programme. Certainly for the city area, it gets more complicated outside because of the mix and match of sort of primary care networks across the wider district. So everyone active plays a more central role in that one, in the city area particularly. It's been too complicated across the wider district. But in the wider district, that information does go back to the GP, so they can track that.
And whilst we're on the subject, how's the hydrotherapy pool going? I've got to bring that one up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the figures are, wait, the throughput of people taking part, well, using the site is great. We've got a advisory board meeting on Thursday where everyone active will go into depth in sort of the quarterly report. So we know in more detail on sort of the throughput there. But as far as I'm aware, it's going well. The bookings and their timetable is filling up. So I don't think they're empty at all.
Good, pleased for that. Yes, councillor Warren.
Brian and I worked on the leisure centre years ago, didn't we?
Never guessed.
But one thing that's really important, we have some local sports clubs wanting to protect their access. Were able to provide a brief update on how many local clubs, whether it's swimming, gymnastics, are using the leisure centre and what preferential rates they have or access to the leisure centre. And I guess that applies to both, doesn't it?
Thank you. I can't provide on any sort of rates that they have. That's not for me to comment on at the moment. But in terms of the sports clubs themselves, there's many. Swimming Club, as you know, they've got the squash clubs there. Off the top of my head, they've got their own in house programme as well within their own clubs. But they've got a wide range of sort of local clubs that do use the site. And it's great to see because other partnerships that we've created and they've created is great. And if we can build on that relationship going forward, it just means that they can have, and they can build on their own sort of participation. But I honestly can't remember the clubs off the top of my head, but I know that it's going well with the links.
John Tibbetts, please.
I mean, it is an astonishing amount of things you're doing here and the team are doing. And I suppose it's one of the things, as Steve Lincoln mentioned, that you have to kind of target to an extent because there's only limited resources the team are dealing with. But I suppose the question is, is picking up on, I suppose, the councillor Pearson's theme of looking at lessons learned as an important thing of all this sort of stuff. But is there a particular gap in, for a particular group in the district at the moment where you would like to focus more on in the next, over the next year? And maybe we're not doing quite as much on as we could do or we could develop what we're currently doing?
I think for us, in line with national sort of statistics, there's women and young girls is a key focus. But moving off that as well, it's those of sort of mental health problems. It's becoming a key issue nationally as well. So, and sort of within the district, we're working with our health and wellbeing sort of support groups to sort of help and support those people. So again, it's working with everyone active to provide sort of specialised or individual programmes for those concentrating specifically on that target area. So going forward, I'd like to sort of be able to say that we're going to focus on those two particular groups.
I was just going to add to that as part of the health and wellbeing plan that Callum works on with everyone active. I know they've identified some sort of local agencies who they work particularly in partnership with. So Trinity would be one. And I believe Solent Mind, I might have got that wrong, but I think so. So they sort of plug in and engage directly with those agencies who are best placed to, I would say, place their clients. But, you know, to make, to ensure that the right people are engaging in the right ways. So that's a key part of the health and wellbeing plan with everyone active.
Hi, everybody's happy. Can we go on to debate then, please?
Thank you, Chair. 10 years ago, when I was, Callum is smiling because I think it was just about the time you joined the City Council, wasn't it, Callum? One of our issues was this very one. When I looks at the programme that's developed over the last 10 years, I'm absolutely staggered. We've fulfilled pretty well most of our dreams, and I know it's a continuing dream. We talked at that time about the London 2012 initiative, not just for the able bodied athletes, but also the physically disabled athletes, not just physically disabled, blind, deaf, the whole range. And we've got programmes now ongoing, thanks to your team within Winchester Districts, that really we just dreamt about 10 years ago. Now you've got them ongoing. And the, not just the physical disability one, which you mentioned, which started 10 years ago. I remember going to that first event and the second one a few years later. I seem to recall the guy who won that event was the same in the both occasions. I guess he's getting old now, I don't know if he's still competing. But he really was, and when it looked what he could do, and they were classified as disabled, it really made you rethink about exactly what disabled means. Not just the people concerned, but also people's attitude towards them. When you look at, we introduced, I think, was it Blind Ball? I remember a past pupil at the college, sorry, the school that I taught at, tall albino lad. Yeah, that's right. And he landed up actually in the Olympics playing that game. And he tried to, I think, touch a club, and Peter Simmons, as I recall. Yeah, I don't know how, is it still ongoing? Well, I hope so. But also we introduced cage cricket, as I recall. Now, this cage cricket, for those of you who don't know what it is, in actual fact, it was developed in areas terraced housing in London and where the city council, well, the local council blocked off one end of this road. It was bound by brick walls. And the people went down there and looked, what can we use this space for? And they devised this sort of game of cricket that you could play within a tennis court and for scoring for various struts. And it went on from that, introducing a lot of girls to cricket in North London, as I recall. And of course, now we see what the England cricket team is able to do. And a lot of those graduated from that early development, which actually was in Portsmouth. I didn't want to mention Portsmouth. But you, the explosion of yoga and zumba and Tai Chi and all this, which you didn't mention, because a lot of these, we forget, there are a lot of private facilities that are now drawing members. The Winchester Flyer, I can't do anything but praise that guy. I was there with Mick Shannon came down when they opened the pitches on King George V. I don't know if you were there, Callum, were you? Mick Shannon was there? No, no. Well, for those of you who don't know, again, he was one of the England 1966 football team. I can't remember whether he scored or not, but he is now actually a horse trainer up in Newmarket. But his granddaughter actually plays for, or at least then, Pace Winchester Flyers. At that time, had a membership of about 300. I think now the membership's close on 500, thanks to the facilities at King George V in partnership with the university, which is great. Let us not forget university input. Let us not forget St Swetham's input. Let's not forget, which is a college input, because they have a term where students go out to help some of these facilities in the community. It's part of their programme of education. And so let's not forget that, this is all part of it. There's only one bit of your report I'm a little bit worried about, Callum. I noticed on page 43, aging well, well, okay, I suppose that's me.
councillor Pearson, please. Can we, councillor Pearson, we are on in debate.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not asking a question.
I'm just saying.
We do have a limited time, too.
Quizzically saying that, chairman, because I can only think that must be dying well, must be points at me. So I would die off and shut up.
Can we start drawing it to a close, please?
Thanks so much, Callum. Congratulate your team. Fantastic. Well done.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. councillor Clear, please.
Thank you, Chair. Callum, I applaud you and councillor Ferguson, of course, and thank you for the presentation. Having worked for a year, if you like, when I was on Cabinet with communities and wellbeing, I worked closely with you and with everyone active at the sports centre, loved it. And I thought then that you did great work. But gosh, you've come here this evening and I can't think of anything you haven't covered, you know, in yours activities in sport. I know your half term clubs and your summer term are very well received all round. And all I can say is well done. And I hope you will continue as well as you have and you go from strength to strength. So, and thank you for everything. Thank you.
councillor Tibbetts, please.
Echo those comments, councillor Clear. Really enjoyed councillor Pearson's stream of consciousness there. So thank you, Frank. And just to say, I mean, it is an astonishing paper, the amount that's happening. And I know the focus on it is sort of physical activity and wellbeing. But it's just, you could do an equally long slide full of the impact of the grants work that the community's doing. You could do an equally long set of slides on the work, the City of Sanctuary stream, what was going on there and has been going on there very intensively for the last six months. And so it is an astonishing amount of work that the community team are doing. They do really, really deserve credit for that. So it's to echo the really positive comments that have been made. Very positive to hear the plans for focusing on supporting mental health in the district going forward. I think a lot of people in the district are concerned about that, particularly younger people's mental health. And I note that there's a really positive programme mentioned, the Bablington Programme for young people. And I would love to see similar sort of physical activity initiatives delivered across the district and also other types of activity as well, addressing younger people's mental health. Urban Art is one that springs to mind. One of the big challenges we have in the city is addressing the graffiti problem. And everyone says, well, actually, why don't we just, you know, impose stricter, harsher sentences on people that do this? And it's absolutely, but then it's absolutely impossible to track people down. Doing so would be not particularly a good response anyway. But looking at how we can harness creativity amongst younger people instead and try and engage them in a far better way. It's amazing what you folks are doing because what you are doing is making our community much, much stronger. And all of this work is just absolutely brilliant. And you clearly focused it in the right areas, on the right, in the right people. So really grateful for that and really excited to see. And definitely, definitely willing to help you all as much as I can going forward. I'm sure everyone else in this room agrees with that.
Sorry, we're just about to launch yoga sessions for those of mental health as well for young people. So I forgot to add that, but just to build on your comments.
Yeah, your slides are being cut unfairly, I feel.
councillor Archwell, please.
I just want to echo what the other councillors have been saying. When I was the mayor last year, I also took part in some of the activities. Just seeing how the pleasure the young children got from doing something, you know, going out of school and being active outside, maybe first time for some of them. So well done and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it was fencing and archery, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, Callum. That was an excellent report and pleased to see how things have improved over the last year or so. Well done.
Thank you, Chair.
councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Chair. I just really wanted to thank the committee for both your questions and your encouraging comments this evening. I also wanted to thank Callum particularly for the work that he does in this area. We've been referring to a team. This is primarily a team of one. So we really, you know, should feel grateful for the work that Callum does. I think the report shows the importance that we place as administration on health and wellbeing of our residents in the district and that we are very focused on targeting what are limited resources to help those who are both vulnerable and possibly, and inactive or possibly both. A lot of the activities we offer are at a subsidised rate. Some of them are free. And that is going to be really, really important for our residents as we go through a period when everybody will be looking at the cost of anything that they consider peripheral during the cost of living crisis. So that a point about making sure we have activities that are accessible is important. I also hope that the committee tonight can see that we are focused on providing these opportunities across the district, which is very, very important. But they aren't just centred in the city, they're everywhere. But again, thank you for your comments, thank you for your question and thank you for your time, Chair.
Thank you. We'd like to move on to the next item. councillor Ferguson.
I was wondering, Chair, whether I might get to eat my orange, but obviously I'm not going to. It was a long time since I had lunch at about half past 12. Anyway. So I believe Steve, Mr Lincoln, is going to say a few words around this. We have brought to the committee a very brief, very, very brief presentation on the cost of living intervention, a set of measures that we announced at Cabinet last week and that will be reaffirmed at council tomorrow around our response around the cost of living crisis. This is very much a local oriented response to how part residents, it's in addition to any central government support that is out there. Mr Lincoln, do you want to take us through the slides or do you want me to carry on?
I'm very happy to speak if you want. I picked this up from Dornady, who wasn't able to be here tonight. So the slides are quite succinct, but to the point set out. So I was going to just mention a couple of points. If there's anything you want to say now, please do, but otherwise I'll just say a few words. Okay. So like I say, I'm not going to read out the slides. There's clearly set out here the broad areas of work that the council's going to be looking to, to take forward, to try and help support people through these difficult times. Obviously, it's very early in the piece. We're just looking at the moment at getting some resource in place so that there's somebody who can be a dedicated lead on this piece of work. So there's somebody who, you know, day to day is coordinating this activity, which pulls together, will pull together a number of streams across the council in terms of work that's already happening and new things that we want to try and do. It makes reference of some sort of emergency funding. We've already had some conversations with one or two organisations and Citizens Advice is a very obvious one. There'll be no surprise to anybody there to try and make sure that we work with those partners who are best placed to provide the support that's necessary and that they have the resources to do the additional work that's necessary to provide the most support to the people needing it the most. There's mentioned, I think councillor Ferguson mentioned in the previous item around the idea of sort of warm spaces. So there's, as part of a broader gathering of people and key agencies, one of the issues we're keen to investigate and just probe and find out what place there is for this concept of warm spaces that's been talked about in other areas. And we need to have a look and to think about what that means in Winchester and how that could work most effectively here. And there's mention of a webpage and it talks about setting one up, but it's already there. So the webpage is already there. In fact, a series of webpages is a section of the webpage. And then flowing into the next bullet point, which is about the council's own services. I think what we mustn't forget here, this is not a whole series of new things that we're coming up with. The council's been doing a lot of this stuff for many years. It's always been central to what we do. It's part of what councils are about, isn't it? It's supporting the people who need that help the most. It's just a little bit more obvious now and maybe the group of people who need our help is a little bit different and is growing from maybe how it has been traditionally. So there's something here which is just about making sure that services that maybe traditionally have been for a particular cohort of people, that we communicate that and raise awareness of that amongst people who might not necessarily think of themselves as being so in need or so vulnerable. Some of the same concepts we talked about during Covid, actually. People who don't necessarily think of themselves as needing help, but maybe now who do and might just need a little help and encouragement to realise that. and might just need a little help and encouragement to realise that and accept that. So there's something around that, around just recommunicating some of the things that we've always done, and making sure that's understood as part of a broad package of support. And then obviously, any work that we can do, anything we can do to try and encourage central government and others to really step up to the mark and address things in a way that we think is appropriate for Winchester. And five clear objectives. Again, I probably don't need to say too much about that. We... councillor Ferguson will.
Now I've had a breather. So we would welcome the committee's comments on the objectives that we've set ourselves. We wanted to make it simple so we can sort of measure our impact. The accessing support quickly and easily is the first one. We talked already about that extra support to our most vulnerable residents. And I think Steve has talked about how we're looking perhaps internally to refocus activity to those who will be most affected. The helping residents cut their carbon, reduce their energy bills. Obviously, energy bills are a key concern for many people. And as part of that, I'm sure as this committee knows, we have had a programme for our own council tenants, many of whom are extremely worried about the winter, where our retrofit programme has been concentrated on voids. So when a property becomes empty, we would go in and do the work. We are now launching a new programme called retrofit ready, which will allow our residents in the lowest performing energy bands, so EPC, D and below, to opt in to have a energy assessment. And from that energy assessment, if we identify there are measures that we can do now, so that could be around additional loft insulation, it could be that their cavity wall installation is improving, it could be that they have firmly inefficient doors, it could be that they're in an area where we can change the few remaining properties where we have single glazing to double glazing. And a very simple thing, it could be that we find their extractor fans aren't working properly, because it takes a lot more heat to heat damp air. So there will be a package of measures that we can do quickly, and that will have an impact both on the warmth of their homes, but also the amount of energy they need, which will also reduce their carbon. And the key thing, we're calling it retrofit ready, is it's an opt-in. And traditionally, residents have been a bit reticent about having work done while they're in situ. The situation they find themselves in is residents and us saying, can I opt in? Is there something you can do for me? That's around our own tenants. But the council has also teamed up, and again, Mr Lincoln might be able to help me out here, because it's more on the carbon neutrality programme. But there are other schemes where our private owners can access other schemes to look for energy efficiency measures, where we've linked up with a couple of partners to do that. The making it easy to find and access relevant information, that is very much around the webpage. We know during the Covid pandemic that people saw the council as a trusted source of information. The webpage that we've put together is very much about how to get to that information quickly. And again, it's really important, because there will be a group of residents who've never, never had to be concerned about this. And they may not know quite where to find information and where to turn. So it could be that someone's never considered they might need to use a food bank, or they are worried about getting food. So they can turn to our website, and it will link them to where they need to go and how they can access that. And a key fifth priority for me particularly is this working with our partners to coordinate our efforts and maximise our joint impact. That's to do with the summit, but we have key partners in the county council, in the food banks, in Citizens Advice, in other voluntary groups, and also with our parish councils, with our ward members. Key partners, how we come together to coordinate and maximise our joint impact is really, really crucial to me. Because we know, and we learnt from Covid, that when we work together, we have a far greater impact. So this is very much a local response. These are the objectives, and if we achieve all these objectives, we'll be able to measure that achievement. Thank you.
councillor Cook, followed by councillor Tibbikova.
Thank you, Chair. Could I just ask then, councillor Ferguson, with regard to the retrofit ready, we refer to things being done quickly. What sort of scale, what sort of time scale do you put on things from resident contact, making contact, and then somebody goes round there and then the work gets carried out? Because as we know nationally, there are certain trades that there are shortages of people. And given, I just wanted to sort of gauge, I've got another question as well, if I may. So that's my first question. So what is the speed that these things will be carried out?
So within that, I think, as I said, it's going to be around that energy assessment first. We are proactively going to write to all residents who are in the right properties. So they'll, it's not the resident that has to phone up and say, is my property a right property for this scheme? We will write to all of our residents in bands, EPC.
So they'll be targeted.
They'll be targeted. And they'll have the opportunity to opt in. So that will speed things up to start with. If we do the energy assessment and we find really simple things, like the extractor fans, that's something that can be done really quickly. If it's something around cavity wall installation, we might have to do a survey for that. Though I can't give you an exact answer. But my emphasis is, what can we do quickly to help people reduce their energy bills, their energy consumption, energy bills, throughout this difficult period?
And if I may ask my second question. We often refer to websites a lot. So you've got somebody that hasn't maybe got a great deal of money. They don't have an iPad, or they don't have the web. So my question is, are we then contacting those people via a letter or a postcard, where we drop it into them to make them aware of these things? Thank you.
So one of the key things there is, we are working with one of our trusted partners, our strategic partner, Citizens Advice. Now, people who perhaps are digitally, I can't say that right, digitally excluded, I think is the phrase that people use. They will know that they can either pick up the phone or go to Citizens Advice. And they will also, no, they signpost them to information first. Equally, we don't have it yet, but within the housing team amongst our own tenants, we are looking to acquire some profiling software that will help us to perhaps identify those people who we think aren't at risk yet, but could be at risk. And where we have that contact details, then we can make that contact early enough, as opposed to us picking up the pieces when it starts to go wrong. The key thing for me is, I am concerned that there are people who will need advice. And they may find that they're trying to access that advice, and they can't get through on the phone perhaps to Citizens Advice, because the demand has gone up exponentially. The danger is that they then turn to somebody else who perhaps is not friend. You know, they may go to an unscrupulous lender, or they may turn to some other activity to try and create funds. So the idea is, how can we give them access to information, access to advice and support to help them through?
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. As you know, I'm a voluntary director at unit 12, and one of the big challenges for us as a community organisation, and indeed many of community organisations, is actually doing the paperwork to get the funds. And I suppose you have to be, have a certain amount of due diligence for any public money spent in these circumstances. But with this emergency grant fund, is there going to be a criteria around what type of practical, I think practical support is defined here, what type of practical support? Will it be limited to? Because I know, you know, the county council, for example, has allocates vouchers for purchasing of food. And vouchers for the purchasing of energy is available, but it's only for metered energy, not any energy. But is this grant fund, does it envisage it's going to be a much or completely flexible pot, or how's it going to work, do you think?
So we've been very clear that the emergency grant fund is funding that we want to use to work with partners. So it won't be us giving individual amounts of funding to individual residents. That's not how it works. There are government grant pots, central government grant pots around council tax energy reduction, which are discretionary, and that's sitting in the benefits team. And they will be giving those payments direct out to groups within that. Mr Lincoln, can you help with the process of what we're looking at? Because it is very early days, and that process is only currently being worked up. Is that correct?
It is very early days, so hard to give detail at the moment. I think it would be a combination of, there will be some organisations, and we've mentioned Citizens Advice as a really obvious example, who we know there's a need, we know there's a demand, we know they're the right people to provide a service. So I think there'll be an element which will be about us effectively directly approaching the people who we know we need to work with. An element beyond that may involve, there might be a degree, I wouldn't want to commit this, so there might be a degree which is more of an open process. But I think what we do, what's really clear, and what's come out really clear from members on this, is the need to move at pace. So whatever we do, you're absolutely right that there'll need to be a degree of due diligence and process around this. But we need to make sure that we minimise that so that we get the money to the people who need it as quickly as possible, I think.
And of course, we will be drawing on our experience through the Covid pandemic, where again, we had to, we had to move at pace. And we know those energy bills all started going up from the first.
Thank you. councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's a paper. You don't say an awful lot of exactly what you're doing here, but it's a good introduction. So can I ask a couple of questions here? The emergency grant funding, where exactly is this money coming from? Is it from council tax, or is it from government grants? You imply it's not government grants. So where is the money coming from? So that's my first question. The second question, you seem to be ignoring the fact that the government has already contributed several millions during the course of the last two years to support people of Winchester and other communities around the country. Now, that's not to degrade what you're trying to do here. What I'm trying to measure is what else has to be done? Money doesn't come out of the air, or as much as we like to think it is, although as much as perhaps the present government is implying it does. So what is the source of the money to do this? You say, mention partners. Are we talking about partnerships like the CAB? We're already doing a lot of this work, but with, of course, without the money grants behind them. Because you say, we are helping. Who is we? We are offering extra support. Yeah, okay, we are, but where's the money coming from? The, we are helping residents cut their carbon reduction bills. Yes, that's part of the carbon emergency programme. I follow that one. Making it easier for residents to find access to relevant information. Well, websites, which already exist. Working with partners to coordinate our efforts and maximise our joint impact. Who are these partners, and to what extent are they helping us? But above all, where's the finance behind all of this coming from, as welcome as the programme is?
So we put aside a reserve to deal with inflationary pressures. And some of this money is coming out of that reserve. It's very much targeted at local residents to offer that additional support. We know, and I totally accept, that there has been central government support, but it isn't using our local knowledge of what's needed. And in meetings that we've had with Citizens Advice, they're saying that they're seeing a considerable increase in the number of people approaching them for advice, people who have never approached them before. They're telling us that their ability to pick up the phone, their ability to do the casework is inhibited just because of the sheer numbers and the complexity of that case load. So even though they're a strategic partner, the demand is so great in this crisis that there is a need for potentially additional funding to allow them to do more to support our most vulnerable tenants, our most vulnerable residents, not tenants, sorry. I've been talking housing today as well.
We've, it is reported in the press that the council is, was it, nine hundred thousand pounds in the red? And you're picking, I presume that's going to be supported by the financial reserve. That's what it's there for. And now you're taking some more money out of the financial reserve. What amount of money? And give us some idea in relation to what the counter reserve is. You seem to be spending money without any consideration of actually what the actual source is in terms of numbers. Are you careful not to mention that? I don't understand why.
I think I can't go into that detail here, Frank. But this is a decision that we've made as an administration, as an emergency response to what we see as exceptional circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, but, yeah. I would say it is a secret. They're still sorting things out. No?
I did say the money was coming out of reserves. I didn't, that wasn't a secret.
Yeah, but she, with greatest respect, councillor Ferguson wouldn't have her hand on all the figures, because that comes out of the central budget controlled by the finance people. No, it's not. I'm sorry. No. No. Because you know that you've got a, you have a reserve, and that's what we're using.
I'm sorry, Chair. While I agree with this programme, I'm concerned about where the money is coming from. Why is it such a secret? Why can't you give us an estimate?
Well, we don't know what central government's giving us for a start off, so therefore you've got to take that into a balance. I mean, this country's in such a mess at the moment financially. No, I'm sorry.
So Chair, if I may, I will ask Mr Botham, who allocated this pot, when we asked for it...
I'm sorry, Chairman. I am a councillor, if you don't mind. I'll have the right title.
To provide the detail that councillor Pearson's asked for.
Is that sufficient for you? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That actually answers my question, because I felt that it would be appropriate for somebody from the finance division to be able to give us those details. I know that's not a question, but it would have been a question. So thank you for that. And I suppose I will follow that up by then asking, when would we, as a group or committee or fellow councillors, be made aware of the answers to the questions that councillor Pearson has asked from the officer, Mr Botham?
Yes, Mr Botham will reply to that for us.
Thank you.
Should be referred to the audit committee, Chair.
If the audit committee wants it referred to, yes.
Steve, can I ask you, please, to take that up with Mr Botham, given I'm not here for the next week or so?
Absolutely. I'll take that back, Chair, councillor Ferguson, and take advice from Mr Botham on the appropriate way to communicate this back to members.
Thank you.
Now, we go to debate, please.
I'll convert it into a debate chair. Just to finish on that, I don't think it's unreasonable questions about where the money's coming from, how it's coming from, councillor Pearson. And I think actually, it seems that the point of this report is to introduce the scheme of what the council wants to do and the principles behind it, as opposed to getting into the forensics. But it's a reasonable question, councillor Pearson. And hopefully, councillor Ferguson, very openly, essentially will find out the answer. And there's no secret here, and indeed, no secret to the principles which are sadly very necessary. But a real credit to councillor Ferguson, because I know this has been something that as soon as the, I mean, the situation has become worse and worse, but I know it's something you have been absolutely determined to do whatever you could to try and direct the council's resources at helping those at most vulnerable. So significant credit to you, and I commend you for driving this forward. And indeed, the team that is, as Steve Lincoln mentioned, having to do this as quickly as possible. And appreciate there's going to be some detail that maybe needs to be clarified, but the principles are absolutely spot on.
Councillor Warwick.
Thank you, Chair. And just to add as a sort of supplementary comment, really, I know Councillor Ferguson is keen to get this money out to families, but for the Christmas Carol Centre is funded by the, that's obviously in partnership with the CAB. So I guess that's, I don't know if that's the only base in Winchester. That's for families over the, similar sort of concept. And it's really a signposting. Based at the, to help families over the.
More comment, if you don't mind, Chair. It's more comment, if you don't mind, rather than debate. I help collect food in Wightley for the Meon Valley Food Bank, and they've really struggled lately to get supplies of food, and they also need funds to help with that. There's more and more vulnerable families out there that just need our support. I'm really pleased this programme can be helping.
Sorry to jump in again, Chair, but just to say, to follow up Councillor Warwick's point, the food pantries in the city are certainly looking to collaborate more closely together, so that being the Carroll Centre, Winchester Basics Bank, and the Unit 12 Food Pantry. And indeed, across the district, the HAF funding, which thankfully been pointed to by Councillor Cook, is trying to get all of, getting funds out to all of food pantries across the district. And I know that in terms of partner organisations, I should say, the HAF fund is a county council fund, and I know that they collaborate and communicate with the district council. And it's good to see that the partner organisations have been put at the front and centre of all this because ultimately, organisations like the Community Pantry at Unit 12 will have a very strong idea and indeed, a lot of data around who needs the support. I mean, it's no secret that our membership list for our food pantry is 700 households at the moment, around 700 households. Not that many use the pantry every week, I hasten to add, but the usage is certainly going up. And I know that other food pantries find that too. So this added support could not come at a better time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councillor Ferguson. I'm very pleased, obviously, with this cost of living grant fund. I can understand why Councillor Pearson has asked, and I'm sure, Councillor Pearson, you'll get your reply from Mr Botham as soon as possible, yeah. But we can also pay our key part as councillors by communicating with parish councils. I do a lot of our community centre as well, where there's the food bank and the food pantry, and they're doing a great job, but they always need more support and more help. We write in the parish magazines, we talk to the, it's the elderly in Wickham, they don't have computers and websites, so we do go round and talk to them and make them well aware of what's going on with any present situation. So thank you so much, and I'm sure we'll all continue to help in every way we can.
Thank you. That was a really good report. Thank you, Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the committee for both your questions and your comments. I think the key thing is, this is really just to make you aware of the programme, and as we said, it was only announced last week, though it is, the details are being worked on. But I will ensure that Mr Botham provides the understanding exactly where the funds have been allocated from. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We now work on to the work programme. Councillor Wallace, if you'd like to. Thanks for spending so long waiting for us.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure you know what I'm going to speak about. It's been three months since a motion was agreed at full count to get representatives from Southern Water and other organisations along to review the levels of pollution in our rivers and waterways. However, a date for the meeting has not been set yet. Obviously, it's an important issue for our residents, so how do we ensure this level of urgency is captured by our internal team so that we can get this meeting scheduled?
Thank you. I believe that we've written to Southern Water, asking them for a meeting, to come along to this meeting to address us. We'll find out a bit more when they get liable to come. Certainly, it's difficult talking to Southern Water a lot of the time, I found this week, on another subject I hasten to add. But it is an important thing.
I was just going to say, it's not something I've been directly involved with, but I will take that back and take it up with colleagues and try and ensure there's some urgency around that, Councillor Wallace.
With regard to the work programme, we have a discussion this afternoon about it. The air quality paper that's due to come up would probably be better coming up.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I spoke to Mr Ingram today. Annual update in response of the current air quality management area. Mr Ingram would still intend to bring that to December, but he, there is his talk of a successor, which I think he'd like to come and talk to the committee in March about that, to give some more detail about the potential for a new plan.
Yeah, I gather that the update is really marred a bit by the pandemic and distortion of the figures.
Like I say, it's really, I think Mr Ingram comes each year to the meeting to provide an update on the air quality situation, so that's what's due in December, and he would be in a position to provide that. But I think then there will be a question about, yeah, what comes next? That's what he wants to come back to talk in more detail in March. That would be the appropriate time.
They will be giving a new sheet out, probably with the revised.
Well, certainly, if the committee's approval, that can be added in to the programme for March.
Thank you. With the committee's approval, I think I would also like to have, at some stage in their future, a discussion on solar farms and how we can put that into the local plan because that's quite an important point. We're getting a lot of these applications, and we need to protect the gaps as well as the agricultural land. We'll look at that. I would also like to invite one of the directors of the Freeport to come and talk to us about how that's going to affect Winchester's environment. So that's another point of interest. And also, ask for the airports to come and discuss the flight paths and the environmental impact on that. They've said that they're quite willing to come and do that, so I think we should take advantage of those points. February's an agreement? Good.
Yes, Sue has left. I wanted to mention this, Chair. We were talking earlier, obviously, at the moment, there's five items on the agenda for the December meeting, which is quite a lot. We did discuss this. And actually, I don't know what, one of the things, when there was a public speaker earlier regarding the climate assembly, they did sort of mention the idea of coming back here at some point in the future. I don't know whether they meant the next meeting, but obviously, that would be the first meeting after their event, so.
No, I was just going to agree with one thing you've said. Although these are very important, the agenda for December is quite long at the moment, though, but the March one isn't, is it? So.
What I wanted to flow, I spoke earlier with Councillor Lernery as the cabinet member for climate emergency and in the environment areas. So, you know, subject to the committee's views, there's a report in for management of open space ecological importance, which was down with Susan Croker, and obviously somebody else can pick that up in her absence. But in terms of the balance of items, that's not a time-critical report, so that could slip to the March meeting, could be put back, which would slightly balance the sort of work pressures and make the December meeting a little more manageable, if the committee were minded to do that.
That's what I said, we'll look at that and then giving out a new list. Yeah? Well, I don't see a change of government, we'd never know. With a happy note, I'll close the meeting.